They aren't all the same. They're not all the same. Hopefully, hopefully yours is.
Well, we have, we have a gravel pit, but that's alright, but that's, that's alright. That's a resource, alright. We, we have an oil lease. We have a gas lease. Don't, don't speak to me. I've farmed it all my life. Don't tell me that I'm...
I'd ask each of you tonight to open your ears and listen to your neighbors. I'm not here to tell you there's all good about windmills. There's good and there's bad, and you have to weigh them. First, I'd like to, the town board, if you state your name and say anything that you would like to say, please do so.
Please, sir. Jolene, my name's Jolene Esposito. I've been on the planning, or on the planning board, on the board for, gosh, five years now. And I love it.
I'm Ron Ashworth. Live here in town, born in this town. I was supervisor for twenty-some years here, and I got offered a couple of terms, and I come back on. The county asked me to run, to come back on the board. And at the time, we were working windmills. I worked with the windmills from fifteen years ago. We worked on these things. And it didn't happen. The county kind of took it over, and that was the end of that. But I'm here to listen to you tonight.
My name's Anne Marie Dixon. Moved out here from Buffalo sixteen years ago. Came to a meeting because I wanted to get involved in the community. Didn't realize it was recruitment for running for a town board, or a judge, or whatever. So I said, well, I might as well give it a try. It's been very interesting, ups and downs, as anything else would be. I tried my best ninety-nine percent of the time. I can't, I can admit, I've made mistakes like anybody would. But I'm going on my sixteenth year here and hope to continue to do what's best for the community. Thanks.
I'm John Hill. I've lived in town for thirty-three years. And I have been chairman of the town planning board for five years. I've been a town justice for six years. And now I've been a town councilman for five years. And I'm looking to do what's best and the safest for the town freedom.
Now I'd like to introduce you to the planning board. You're saying, I work for the beer.
I live here in the town of Freedom. I used to be on the town board, and I've been on the planning board. Actually, served the town for twenty-one years. And we're here to make the town better and listen to what the people have to say today.
I'm Dave Reinhard. I grew up over in Eden. I've been in Freedom for like six years now. I've worked in the coal-fired power plant industry for twenty-six years. So the windmills are a little bit in the opposite direction. But, you know, I understand the power grid and all that type of thing. So I've been on the planning board for probably about, a little over a year. I'm going on my second year.
I'm Norm Feldman. I guess you could say I married into the town of Freedom thirty-nine years ago, and I married my wife. I've been on the planning board, I honestly don't remember how many years. It's been a while. So we've worked on a lot of different projects. We were there from the first Noble windmills right on up through all these years. So it's always been interesting.
Brian Arnold, thirty-year resident of Freedom. Been on the planning board for three years. And like the beer said, we just want to do what's best for the people in the community. And those, you know, what we can do to make it well for everybody.
Another person I'd like to introduce is our attorney, Jim McCauley. Jim, do you have anything you want to say?
Well, folks, actually, my office has been representing this town since nineteen seventy-five. And it's Ron Doe's. This actually is not the most exciting thing that's come through our office. And we were, yeah, we did this, Norm, about fifteen years ago, ten years ago, and worked on the first project. And it's been a while. Yeah.
We do have some people here from Invenergy. I offered to let them set up front, but they said something about the natives. Do you want to stand up and tell us who you are?
I'm here for Invenergy. I'm lead developer for New York State. And I'm here with three other people working for us. Lestas Suter-Klein, Scott Johnson, and Gina Gaspur, who works in our office in Arcade. And when they help?
Wednesdays and Thursdays, always there.
Into two, Wednesdays and Thursdays.
If you haven't stopped down there, a paid clinical announcement. Got down and seen Gina. She's very knowledgeable. She has experience. She worked for Noble over in Bliss and Eagle for a number of years. And they have a big map, and they have a lot of good information down there. So feel free to stop down and see Gina.
The windmill project is really being forced by the state. And there's been a change from ten years ago, when Noble came in, the town of Eagle, as well as the town of Freedom. All you had to do was write up your windmill laws, agree to it with the windmill company, and construction started. Now everything has to go through the state. And it's going to be longer. I just attended our first meeting last week over in Delavan. And really, all that really was, was funding. But it was the initial meeting after the pre-application application was completed. The other reason for Freedom, if you look at Freedom, all these hills, the ridges go north and south. And then you have the wind coming up from Lake Erie, and there's an upward draft from that. And so Freedom is an ideal place to put a windmill. The other thing, it's a rural area, limited population, and with this, you can't put windmills in metropolitan areas. Some will be saying, well, put them down in Downstate by New York City. Well, there's no room for them down that way unless you put them out in the ocean. And one thing about wind, it's a natural resource, and it blows here all the, all the time. The second question that was, was asked of me is, what are you going to do with the money that's earned from the windmills? In February, Invenergy filed the pre-application application. What a pre-application application is, is the application that ultimately will be filed. You have to file the pre-application at least a hundred and fifty days before you file the application. And then there's going to start being hearings, as there were in Delavan last week, the first one to get kicked off. And I'm sure there's going to be monthly meetings and things going on as we move closer and closer to construction. That's all I have is an introduction. And at this point, I'd open this up for whoever wants to be a first person. It's all yours, Barney.
Alright. This sheet of economic, economic benefits is just new to me now. You had said, Supervisor Lester, in February at the town board meeting, that the town could expect forty million dollars over forty years. Correct?
I'm not going to say I didn't say that.
Okay, but that sounds about right?
Yeah.
Which averages out. I know it's a little bit heavy in the beginning and a little lighter at the end. But just for conversation's sake, it comes out to an average of a million dollars a year, which sounds like a lot of money. And it is, of course. And I, I got to looking online to see what other towns have gotten and what they've done with it. Because you didn't make any, or the board didn't have any specific plans on what might be done with that money? Whether we buy equipment, or make better roads, or lower people's taxes, or so, and so forth? And I, during that look or view online, I came across an Ole Miss Times article, June seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. The previous supervisor, Jim Whitaker, was quoted as saying that the Invenergy was offering fifteen thousand dollars per sighting, per site, per wind turbine. And I heard last Tuesday during the New York State Public Commission hearing, that they have thirty-four planned sites for the town of Freedom. And a multiplication of thirty-four times fifteen thousand comes out to five hundred and ten thousand. So, you know, I'd have to analyze this new sheet that I got to see how they're coming up with this money. Is a fifteen thousand dollar figure per wind turbine ever come up to you?
Oh, I never heard that number.
No?
Is there anybody from Invenergy who would like to comment on that?
Accurate. What we are talking about paying is eight thousand dollars per megawatt. And each turbine is three point six megawatts. But a portion of that goes to the town, and a portion goes to the schools, and a portion goes to the county. And sorry, I don't have the math right here in my head. But what's, it sounds like fifteen, what is that, eight times three point six? What's that worked out to?
Four twenty-five thousand.
What's that, twenty-four thousand dollars?
About there.
Yeah, so that sounds about right. Which is it? Alright, so fifteen to the town, maybe that's about, yeah, that sounds about right. Those numbers sound about right.
Well, that comes out to five hundred and ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Not a million dollars.
Okay, well, I would have to look at the numbers to see what we have there.
If you divide five hundred and ten thousand dollars by two thousand four hundred residents, residents of the town of Freedom, you come out to two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents a year. What are we going to do with that? Are taxes going to go down that much? Even if the figure that you used, twenty million dollars, or forty million dollars in forty years, a million dollars a year divided by two thousand four hundred residents is four hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. And you're looking at this. This is a house, a two-story house. This is to scale. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We have to remember that each year it increases by two percent.
Just for conversation, I went by average.
You know, that might add a little bit to over forty years.
Tony from Edmonds Room. Hello. Let me start by saying that I'm not personally against alternate energy sources. What I am against is what appears to me, the lack of respect and disregard for the wants, wishes, health and safety of the entire town of Freedom, instead of just a few Invenergy leaseholders. At the February twenty-sixth town board meeting, Stephanie Milks officially requested that the town of Freedom put into place a residential property value guarantee agreement to provide against potential decrease in property values as a result of the installation of the proposed wind turbines. We were told by several folks that night that there's no reason to believe that our property values would decrease and that they would likely increase. This led me to do some research of my own. There's a plethora of information online. Some of it is anecdotal. A lot of it is put out by wind energy companies themselves. Most of what I found supported the fact that large industrial wind turbines most certainly can affect our property values negatively. LandSync Appraisals and Consulting from Ontario, Canada states, "The erection of a wind turbine creates apprehension in the general public, which makes the property less desirable and thus diminishes the price of neighboring properties." The Melanthon Wind Facility in Ontario, Canada caused an average loss in market price of thirty-eight percent. McCann Appraisals LLC from Chicago, Illinois states, "That the approval of wind energy projects within close proximity to occupied homes is tantamount to an inverse condemnation or the regulatory taking of private property rights, as the noise and impacts are in some respects a physical invasion or an easement in gross over neighboring properties. And the direct impacts reduce property values and the rights of nearby neighbors." Forensic Appraisal Group LTD from Nina, Wisconsin states, "The property values have been known to drop between ten percent to being completely unsellable when the property value depends on view shed, peace and quiet, and an expected way of life." An article in Forbes Magazine from September twenty-third, two thousand fifteen states that there is potential decrease in property values caused by issues like flickering, noise, and health problems, and that they are, simply put, visual intrusions. Carl Phillips, Ph.D., guest editor on Nina Pierpont, Ph.D.'s book Wind Turbine Syndrome, A Report on Natural Experiment, states, "There is simply no question that industrial wind turbines lower the value of nearby property." The only legitimate ques- pardon me, question is, how much? In closing, the officials of the town of Freedom have been elected to govern and protect the entire town of Freedom, not merely the proposed leaseholders. There's approximately twenty-three of them, I believe. That leaves two thousand three hundred and eighty-two residents, according to the two thousand and ten census. Per section eleven of Article One of the Bill of Rights under the New York State Constitution, it states that "No person shall be denied the equal protection of the laws of this state or any subdivision thereof. No person shall, because of race, color, creed, or religion, be subjected to any discrimination in his or her civil rights by any other person or by any firm, corporation, or institution, or by the state or any agency or subdivision of the state." If the Freedom Town Board and Invenergy are so certain that there will not be a negative impact on our property, property values because of these behemoths, then basically, put your money where your mouth is and guarantee it. I feel that the town board should insist that Invenergy put a residential property value guarantee agreement in place for the rest of the residents in the town. Invenergy's done it before. They can do it here.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Milks, Town of Freedom resident for the past fourteen years. I have established Freedom United and have retained a lawyer to assist the Town of Freedom residents to look out for our best interests and property rights. If you're interested, please see me at the end of the meeting. We're joining with Farmersville United.
Someone was talking. Can't hear you. Start over.
Sorry.
Could I ask if those of you who are talking, could you please not talk? If you need to talk, please go outside. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Milks, Town of Freedom resident for fourteen years. I have established Freedom United and have retained a lawyer to assist the Town of Freedom residents to look out for our best interests and property rights. If you're interested, please see me at the end of the meeting. We are joining with Farmersville United in Centerville to intervene in the Article Ten proceeding that is to be heard. I would like to address Section fourteen of the proposed wind law, noise and setback easements. This section allows for written consent of affected property owners to allow noise levels to exceed the maximum limits or allow setbacks less than required. I find it hard to believe that a law would allow private parties to waive public health and safety regulations. There will be increased risk of turbine accidents due to irresponsible twelve-hundred-foot proposed setbacks from a residence or a mere six hundred and forty-three feet from neighboring property lines. And here are two significant examples as to why, and I will present the board with copies at the conclusion of my statements. And I do have copies to pass around the room also. First, a turbine started on fire in Weathersfield in January two thousand twelve. Luckily, the turbine wasn't a field because there were scorch marks on it well below the height of trees. We have quite a few turbines being placed in wooded areas. Normally, they are in deserts or far less populated areas, and we just had the fifth driest five-month period on record in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. We should have further setbacks per risk of forest fires. With such short setbacks, our homes will be up in flames long before the rural fire departments get there. It's one thing to lose property values, it's another to lose our entire properties. Additionally, several of our leaseholders are not only our friends and family, but also our employers. The damage to their properties can affect many of our fellow Freedom residents. But the one incident that really concerns me and should concern every Freedom resident is that a one-hundred-and-sixty-foot, twenty-thousand-pound blade fell off of a one-month-old turbine installed by Invenergy in Orangeville in November of two thousand and thirteen. It was one month old. Thankfully, the hunters who were nearby at the time were not injured when it crashed to the ground. But what if we have children out exploring? That's part of our rural lifestyle. Based on my property calculations for if these were to be put in right near my house, the twelve-hundred setback from my house would allow the turbine to be just six hundred and forty-three feet away from where my children play. But because the setback in the wind law is from the center of the turbine when facing the west winds, the tip of the two-hundred-and-thirty-three-foot blade proposed for Freedom's turbines would only be four hundred and ten feet from my south property line. Which, by the way, turbines the size are not even designed for residential areas. What if we are outside enjoying the entirety of our property as all Freedom residents have a constitutional right to do so when one of those snaps off? Or better yet, how much ice can build up on that two-hundred-and-thirty-three-foot blade in the winter? And how far is that going to go when tip speeds can get up to two hundred miles per hour before they're being turned off? There are warning signs posted by Brookfield Wind Company on their projects telling you not to pass a certain point, or ice or other heavy, heavy objects can be thrown to kill you. I have copies of that sign also. And I will be continuing in just a few minutes with the rest of my statements. Thank you.
I bought my property in two thousand and three. My husband is retired. I recently retired. And we thought long and hard of where we wanted to live in retirement. And we sold our home in West Sonica, moved out, decided to stay in Freedom, New York. It's beautiful, country, residence, peaceful. I can open my windows at night and not hear the animals. I don't care. That's, that's life. But I don't want to hear the wind turbines. And I'm sorry if you think noise doesn't travel at night. If the kids down the road have a campfire, we can hear them at night, of course. It's going to stop, you know, when they stop partying. That's fine. But I don't want to hear these wind turbines. And don't tell me that we won't hear them. I do have a problem with the distance to the residence. I have a problem with values of property. My husband and I sunk all our money from our sold home into our residence here. I do believe that there's going to be sleep disturbance. If we open our windows at night at thirty-five decibels, there is potential for awakening. At forty-five decibels, which you're saying that we're going to be getting, there is going to be detrimental health effects, and that will be observed. I hope you listen to everyone here. I know I'm a new resident. I've been here for over a year permanently. And I'm very concerned about these turbines. Get solar energy. Do solar panels. Why do we have to be stuck with, it seems like you're cramming this down our throats. I'm sorry. There is potential for Wi-Fi, which a lot of us don't have cable. We have Wi-Fi. We have cell phones. And all this is going to be affected. And these people are salesmen. So I really don't believe a lot of what they say at all. Thank you.
I also have given rights, my wife and I, for them to come across it. Now, since we've moved to Freedom, and I'm a long-term resident in the southern tier, Allegheny County, grew up and raised. I fought the nuclear dump sites back in the day, too. Alright? These ain't nuclear dump sites. They might be big, tall turbines, but they're renewable energy. Since I moved here, I've had nothing but cards coming to my house. They want to frack my land. Okay? Because we're also on the Marcellus Shale. I don't like that either. Alright? That'll destroy the water. My water's bad enough on Brown Schoolhouse Road. Alright? I got truck traffic goes up my road constantly. So when I talk about noise, I got heavy trucks every night. I sleep right next to the road. Alright? I don't have an issue with the turbines. I don't have an issue with people that have an issue with the turbines. But we have a chance for some green energy. Construction is something I did for twenty-five years commercially. You're going to have junctures in construction where that doesn't work. You're going to have to figure out problems and overcome obstacles. It's in everything, and it's in anything you do. The only other thing I want to tell you is Mr. Ellington is in, retired naval officer, currently owns three properties in this area. He has one at Hiram Lake, over near the wind turbines over there. Says he has no issues with them. Had no issues with them when they put them in. Says the people of Hiram Lake have told him no problems. This is just a letter from him stating, says, "I feel the windmills are an excellent source of green energy for the benefits and exceeding any negative output such as fossil fuels." "We also have property at Hiram Lake, which has a large number of windmills on the east border. I have no complaints from any of the Hiram property owners." Since, oh, excuse me. "Sincerely, Gerald Ellington." This is for the board. Thank you, folks.
Just a quick question. I know nothing about these things. They generate electricity. So Freedom's going to get the electricity that these generate?
In this case, no. The electricity would be collected and put onto the transmission grid.
Alright.
Distributed throughout the state.
Throughout the entire state of New York?
It goes onto the transmission grid. So I mean, electricity is, Freedom then pulls electricity from the grid as well, but so does all the communities in the area.
Okay.
There's all electricity from the grid.
Alright, that was my question. Thank you.
Hi, I'm your neighbor over there. I live in Farmersville, New York. And I and a group of Farmersville residents have also formed Farmersville United, similar to Freedom United. And I think that you people really should do some very serious research on these things before you sign up for this. We're sending out lots of information to our neighbors in Farmersville. And by the way, nobody knows what's going on there. And it's not a mistake. It's been kept very secret. So there's only a handful of people in Farmersville that know. That's about to change. So here's the claim. Wind is green energy, renewable. We can lessen our dependence on fossil fuels. I ask you this, fact. How much in fossil fuels are burned to make the concrete a sixty-story turbine needs in order to be anchored into the ground? How much fossil fuels are used in taking the steel that goes into a sixty-story wind turbine? Wind is unstoreable. It's unreliable. And utilities must cycle gas and coal-fired generators at all times to back up the intermittent wind. Every country that's put these in has figured this out. Denmark is the world's most wind-intensive nation. They have more than six thousand turbines. A tiny little country, size of Maine. Six thousand turbines generating nineteen percent of its electricity. But not one fossil fuel plant has been closed in that, in that country. Fifty percent more coal-generated electricity is needed to cover the wind's failings. Who knew? Wind is fickle. It doesn't just blow when we need it, right? And we're all supposed to put up with these things so that New York City people can get extra electricity? And we can't sleep at night so that they can have their air conditioners? I mean, I'm not signing up for that. So what do the Danes now say about wind power? Windmills are a mistake and economically make no sense. They don't reduce any carbon dioxide emissions, and it's been a terrible, expensive disaster. The only thing green about these wind turbines is the, is the color of the money that's flowing to this company, that's getting your tax subsidies. You're paying for this in one way or another. And now we're going to pay for it with our health. And I think you should think about that.
Ray from McKinley Parkway, Buffalo, non-resident.
Yeah, I put on there I'm a non-resident because I don't actually live down here. I was informed about this meeting by, I'm in Local Seventeen, which is the operating engineers. I'm fresh off of working on a project like this down in Arcright, New York. I spent a lot of time on that project from July of last year through January of this year. I was running a bulldozer, so I was right on the ground tearing apart farmers' fields and cutting through driveways and all that stuff. Now, these are landowners, so they signed off on it. And you have every right to protest these things. We had protesters down there. But I was on good graces with the owner of the project, which is what Invenergy would be. I was EDPR down there. I worked for White Construction, who was the general contractor. So again, if you guys have any questions as far as impact, like on the ground, I'd be happy to answer those. I will say this. Big businesses like this, it's not in their best interest to build things that are faulty or bad for you. I understand that there's a misconception that they don't understand what the impacts are on the residential level. But you guys have been working on this for, what, fifteen years now? I believe Arcright, it was nineteen years in the making. It becomes a generational issue, and I can appreciate that. I live in South Buffalo. I live close to the Lackawanna Farm, so I can see them. I think... I think they look majestic on the water, but I don't have to live next to them. I don't have to raise kids next to them. I don't have to, you know, send kids to school next to them. So I certainly understand your concerns. But I think you'd be remiss not to think about... And I think that the board should definitely do their due diligence when it comes to negotiating a contract. There's a lot of things on the front, during, and afterwards, impact-wise, to, I guess, give you some sort of surety that things will be done right, safe, and you'll get what you're due. I think a major footprint, like you're talking here, 37 turbines. There was 34 that we put up that aren't even up right now. And that's another thing. When you talk about timelines and things like that, you can say all you want. We're going to get started in the spring and be done by the fall. Well, that's what they said for Arcright. And they're not done yet. So you do have that veil of concern. And the roads have gone, excuse my French, to shit because they're old country roads. They're rural roads. And you've got truck traffic beating the hell out of them, which selfishly, in construction, whether it's union or non-union, we benefit from. So I'm for these things because I want to take a step away from that coal. I want to take a step away from fossil fuels. And this is right. That NIMBY not in my backyard. I mean, talk about gas, natural gas. Talk about wind energy. Talk about hydro. Talk about any of these things. You don't want them in your backyard. And I can certainly understand that. But I think you should at least take the time to hear each other out and, for Christ's sake, do the research. Because once they go up, they don't come down. And if they do come down catastrophic-wise, I hope that's not the case. You know, dismantlement-wise, hell, I'll probably be on the job taking them down. So I don't... It doesn't bother me one way or the other. So again, I'm going to stick around here. If you've got questions about the impact right on the ground, I'd be happy to answer those. And again, I'm not here to represent my union or construction in general. I'm just speaking from the heart on these because I do identify with the residents that you have every right to be concerned. But here you're the board out, and here Invenergy out, that they have more at stake than I think you sometimes might think. And that's all I have.
Economically, this will have a major impact. Will have a negative impact economically and environmentally. When you talk about the money that they promise you, your wind rates in this area, the capacity rate, the nameplate rate is one thing. 2.3 megawatts, whatever, 3 megawatts. It's not real. It's 24%. So any of the numbers and the money you're talking about, you can just do the math and say it's 24% of whatever they're promising you if the payment is based on megawatts produced. Because megawatts produced in western New York are 24%. It's all on this paper and in this film.
The agreements are all based on nameplates.
Megawatts produced. Have you read your contracts? Your contracts tell you the truth. Your contracts will also say you will lose your mineral rights, and you will lose your status as an agricultural tax property. You will become an industrial tax property. Read your leases. Make sure that they aren't fooling you. This is a situation in all of western New York where poor little town boards are drinking the Kool-Aid, and they're forced because of our governor to cooperate with a program that doesn't comply with our constitution. The state constitution requires that local officials protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. That's their first charge. Economically, it will be a burden. The most basic thing you will need is a wind energy ordinance that protects you. It will give you a good property value guarantee. It will give you a one-mile setback. It will give you a 35-decibel acoustical limit to protect your family. It will have meaningful environmental tests. It will have adequate decommissioning terms, and it will have a 500,000 escrow account for the life of the project to protect your community. When the other towns in this area, Somerset and Redfield, were faced with this, they immediately issued statements such as this. Wind projects threaten the environment, economy, and natural, national security, and the health of our area residents. It does affect radio and television. It affects radar. You can't have radar for aircraft. Your communications are interrupted by turbines, and the taller they get, the worse it hits. The county of Oswego and the county of Jefferson have both set up in opposition. So has the county of Chautauqua. The Danish government has canceled its offshore projects because they cost too much, and they cost everyone. In the long run, the negative economic and environmental effects far surpass any possible benefits that you may think. These salesmen, who are basically representing special-interest lobbyists on Wall Street because they're getting 75% of their money from the state and the federal government subsidies. Those are our taxes. Don't let your local pilot go through. That'll help because then these guys won't get a tax break from your county. And then they'll say, "Well, we don't get it. We're only getting a tax break from the feds and the state, and now we're not getting it from the county. Maybe we'll find some other sucker somewhere." So please, take a look at the film, share it. It's our county executive. He says, "No windmills."
Hi, Rick Lang, Scotch Road Freedom. I also own property up in Farmersville. I asked the board, is everybody on board with wind power?
No.
That's what I thought. I kind of gleaned that over the last few meetings. How about the planning board? You're all for wind power or against?
Kind of neutral.
See, I'm neutral, too. I'm totally neutral.
I've been to a planning board meeting. They're all towards it.
All right. I'm not for it or against it because this is new to me, and I'm still researching. And I got a lot of info tonight that I'm going to take home and look at. But one thing, our board, we elected them. So if someone's accusing you of drinking Kool-Aid, they're calling you morons. We did not elect morons. I know you're doing your research just like I am. So that's an insult. And I just wanted to come up and mention that. As far as having windmills, I like renewable energy, too. But someone else just mentioned you can't store it. What can you store? What kind of energy can you get in store unless you have batteries? And you're not going to have batteries. I'm telling you, this is all new. And I believe you guys are doing what's in our best interest. And that's it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. And I just want to add to the record that I agree with what Tracy has to say, too, because that is definitely a concern of mine also, is our property values. I'm going to touch a little bit onto the noise. I have a friend who lives in the town of Eagle, and as she will tell you, the windmills are noisy. They're much noisier than what they want to present that they are. There's also, I don't know them personally, but a family over there who's had... Has had TV interference and cellphone interference, that they've lost that. My husband works with a coworker in Sheldon that lives with the windmills up there. And he will say, again, first thing he'll say is, "They're noisy." And he also gets the flickering, the light flickering. The rural background noise sound pressure level is 30 decibels. In the plans here, it was written up that it would be 50 allowable. This is a hilly terrain. Sound travels more, and also at night, sound is louder. A wind turbine that's 1,640 feet away has... Will create 38 decibels. And then, again, in here, it's... They're saying the 1,200 feet, 1,200 feet away from a residence for land. Weathersfield, there's 10 turbines up there, gone up there not that long ago. It was on a breezy day. There were four out of 10 in operation. There was oil dripping out of them, and I do have some pictures here that I will share. The entire bottom of the motor is covered in it. Turbines may be quiet when they're new, but later on down the road, mechanical structures deteriorate. How will the noise decibel levels be addressed in the future? The wind turbines over there were about 18, approximately 18 years old over in Weathersfield. Another thing, visual impact. I have a beautiful view. I am up on the top of the hill. That's the first thing that people say when they come to my home, is what a beautiful view that I have. I did not sign up for industrial-sized windmills because they are going to be right front and center, right smack dab in my view. I'm also going to have, along with it, is going to come along with the noise. And along with that is going to be the red flickering lights at night. And in the morning, when the sun rises, I'm... Or, sorry, it's going to be the red blinking lights at night. And in the morning, when the sun rises, then it's going to be the flickering from the sun. Thank you.
Came here to try and get some answers. Two proposed windmills were approximately 3,000 feet from my house. I live on top of the hill. I want to know, how long are the lengths of the tower sections?
Sorry. You're asking us that question?
Yes, yes.
How tall are the towers?
The sections that are going to be transporting for construction.
I'm sorry. I don't have... It's different lengths, I'm sure, for different models of turbine. But, you know, if the tower is... The tower's 300 feet tall, so, I mean, you're probably looking at lengths between 50 and 100 feet.
Okay. How long are the blades?
Blades are...
233 feet.
250 feet.
233.
233 each.
These other people know the answers.
All right. I will look up the answer. If I do the math and I get it wrong, you guys will all...
All right. Now, when they were putting out windmills, I saw trucks going down the road with the blades on them. How do you propose to get a 233-foot blade plus the truck trailer down Bray Road for construction?
I don't know the exact road you're talking about, but you're right, that getting the blades down the road is a challenge. And that's something that we have not planned out yet. We're going to have to look at intersections and see how the blades can make the turn. In some cases, you might take different routes to get the turbine access roads, and you might, you know, might have the shortest route.
I can tell you from living on the road that there is no way you're going to get a truck with a blade to make any of those turns to get on the Bray Road.
They'll bring them in by helicopter if they have to.
Is that true?
We have no plans to use helicopters.
There's enough money to do without that.
I just agree with you. That is a big challenge, though. You're right. Getting the long blades in here is a challenge.
Okay. And noise levels, that close? You figure how many decibels?
We said we're going to... Our plan is to design the project for 45 decibels, maximum noise level.
That's running 24 hours a day?
No. That would be the maximum noise level that occurs when the wind speeds are at... I don't have the exact when the wind speeds are high.
Well, let me tell you something. We can see about 50 windmills from our house, and they're going all the time. So I would imagine when you put these up, they're going to be running 24 hours a day. Nighttime?
Yes. The wind moves at night, so they would spin at night, yes.
Yeah. Is that going to affect sleep?
Our experience with other projects is that they're not... People do not have significant problems with it.
Well, what if they do?
I mean, that's why you have to design it properly, and that's why we're proposing 45 decibels.
Well...
Three minutes is up.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Good evening. I, like most of the people who've spoken so far, am concerned about my property values. I have a hard time understanding why the board, why our town planning board, the board in general, isn't pushing for Invenergy to do this. Maybe it scares them away, the thought of possibly standing out, I mean, against Invenergy a little bit that might be inconvenient for them to do this for us. If they're not going to affect our property, it should not bother you to sign such a thing for us. So that's my first question to you guys. Why you won't do that? And you don't have to answer right now. I know you don't want to. I understand. It's probably a pain and a hassle, but it's a pain and a hassle for me to lose value of my house. Probably the biggest investment any American makes, or at least a good portion of us. Another question for you guys is, what about the landowners who board of the properties that you're putting these up on? If you can be 660 foot away from a property line, and I can't build for 1,200 feet, what's in it for the other property owner? More than just money. I understand you might have some recoup for them, but do they lose the right to build on their property with the other 500 feet? I assume they do?
No. I mean, the setbacks... The way these local laws are usually written is the setbacks work one way in that we are prevented... You know, they restrict where you can build a turbine from existing homes.
Sure.
But it doesn't restrict people from building homes near turbines after the fact if that's something they want to do.
I would have to think they might not want to because there's probably a reason the law is there. But so at least in some way, they're losing some portion of value of their property over this. I mean, it's going to be less sellable to sell that five-acre piece that half is overlapped by your windmill 1,200-foot setback, that maybe you could build a house there, but I can't imagine why anybody would want to. But that's more of a statement than a question at this point, I guess. For the town board, have you guys spoke with other towns? I know Randy has. I'm guessing some of the other guys have. Both the ones that I know we've spoke with, some of the town boards that were for it. Have we spoke with any of the previous town board members that maybe were against it that might have a different view, that might say, "Hey, now, we initially got this much money as was promised, and then three years later, it's down to this much because of maintenance or whatever's written into the contracts." You might want to look for these loopholes before you sign your law. And I'm just wondering if we've done any research that direction to get the most out of this. I mean, if this is truly an opportunity for the town, why not get the absolute most out of it as possible as opposed to signing with a first-better that steps up and says, "Hey, I'll give you 50 bucks for that." You know, like, go a little further. I'm hoping you have. I trust that if you haven't, you will. Both ways. But the ones that were against it, too, or even ones that have them that are still, you know, might have something...
The supervisors that I've talked to have not indicated that they're against it.
I've talked to one, at least, previous town board member that was. I can pass his number to you because I think it would be...
Oh, it's a town board member?
Yeah. Just somebody that was against it, that at least is going to give you the other perspective. He got to see the whole thing through. They are in his town now. And he honestly, some of the things he said weren't half-bad, but some of the things he said were something to be concerned about. Again, the property values going back. How are we done?
Three minutes is up.
All right. Just quick, board, I hope you're hearing us on this. I mean, you're hearing an awful lot of people speaking, an awful lot of us that really are truly concerned for safety, property values, the setbacks. Somewhere in the middle seems like maybe the right spot of the law that was proposed a couple months ago versus the law that's proposed now. But this one seems like it was almost written by Invenergy.
It is already acknowledged in this law that it is unsafe to have an inhabited building within 1,200 feet of a turbine. That means that there should be at least 1,200 feet setbacks from people's property lines, from the tip of the blade for people to safely use their entire property. Under this law's stipulations, in the calculations that I did for my personal property, 50% of my property would become unusable due to being unsafe, in an unsafe zone. I do have a diagram of that for anyone who would like to see solid evidence. How many Freedom residents within the vicinity of these? And I did count up 37 turbines on your map on your site, so I'm not exactly sure where 34 came from. I have a list of names. I've numbered all the turbines. I can prove everything I say. So how many Freedom residents within the vicinity of these 37 proposed turbines will So, how many Freedom residents within the vicinity of these 37 proposed turbines will be encroached upon like that? If the setback is at the tip of the blade, which is where it should be, 75% of my property would then be deemed unsafe and unusable. So now, Freedom residents have to tell their kids to stay towards the front of their property and play by the road? Freedom residents are being requested, under a law, to sacrifice the land that they bought for the lifestyle they chose. That's an infringement on the entire Town of Freedom's property rights to the utmost extent. This type of negligent, property right-encroaching setback has no business being allowed in the Town of Freedom, let alone the United States of America. That's two major incidents in less than two years, right in our own backyard. We demand larger setbacks and more appropriately-sized turbines for populated areas. Randy Lester already publicly admitted that he is aware that there are documented turbine accidents causing injuries or fatalities, when he stated that there are more deer accidents than turbine accidents. In my eyes, that doesn't make a good case, because all he did was inform us that now we have additional risks of major turbine accidents, making Freedom a less safe place to live. Completely unacceptable. If you, the town board, vote this law in under your oath of office, as we're in by the planning board and represented by the town attorney, who are also under an oath of office, you put yourselves in a position to be responsible for property damages and serious turbine accidents. You'd better be prepared for all the consequences that go along with it.
It talks about environmental impact statements, studies on shadow flicker, visual impact, fire protection emergency plan, noise analysis, property value analysis, assessment of potential electromagnetic interference with microwave, radio, television, personal communication, et cetera, et cetera. What I would like to know is when these studies are going to be performed? Is this after it's a done deal and we can't do anything about it? Is this something that's done prior to? How does that work? Because I don't know.
So, all of the studies you are referring to in that local law, are you reading from a local law?
Yes.
So, in the case of our project, it's being reviewed by the state, and even those requirements are in the local law, those would apply if somebody did a smaller project. Our project's going through the state process, and we're doing those studies now. So, they'd be done before any decision is made.
And how, how do you go about doing that here, if you don't have this, you know, just to remind everybody, larger than any other windmill in the area, or wind turbine, I'm sorry, how do you go about doing the study for something that size, if there isn't any?
The studies, for instance, for shadows are based on the size of the turbine, so you have to use the right dimensions to study it.
And you're doing this where?
We, what do you mean, where?
Do you have a turbine, a turbine of this size?
No, it's done on the computer. You analyze, I mean, the path of the...
Okay, so you don't actually know how it's going to affect the people then?
No, no.
You just know what it's going to do?
I won't answer your question.
You won't?
You just don't want to cut me off? I'm telling you, the shadow study is done with a computer model, because the path of the sun is a pretty predictable thing, and they can predict how often a shadow will occur on a given piece of land. And that's what's done with the computer. And it's a function of the location of the turbine, the location of the spot you're analyzing, and the dimensions of the turbine.
Okay, well, that's, I was trying to clarify, so it doesn't actually have anything to do with how it impacts people themselves, or anything like that? It's just the impact of the flicker on the property?
The study calculates the number of hours or minutes during the year in which shadows could occur at a location. And so, you analyze all of the residences in the project area.
Okay, all right.
And we'll be submitting, our plan is to submit an application at the end of this summer, and then the state would, takes, has up to 12 months to make a decision on that application.
And the people doing this study, that's somebody hired specifically by Invenergy? Is it a third party? How does that work?
Invenergy is required to submit the studies to the state, and then the state, and they have to be done to standards that the state agrees to, and then the state reviews the studies to make sure that they think that they are adequate and, you know, founded all the scenarios they want studied.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to tell you about the towns in Arkright, the homes in Arkright that have all gone on the market. People are selling their homes, right across the board since the bulldozers came and took down their forests. Those homes are selling at half the value of those homes. The realtors have verified that, they're selling for half the value. That's true in Wyoming County as well. We have these, on this film, and I will get you, gentlemen, a copy of the film. It includes our county executive who's expressing concern about the loss of property values in Chautauqua County. Regarding the amount of steel and concrete it takes, I asked an Ever Power executive, what's the break-even point? What is a break-even point? That's when you make money up to the point where you pay for it. So, the cost of the steel, the concrete, and the rare earth metals, which are mined in very, very unenvironmental conditions in China, the cost of those will not be earned by the electricity made by one wind turbine for 20 years. Now, is that a green thing to do? To waste steel and concrete and the poor lives in China who are making this nolybium, or mining it from the, from their farms to produce these? As I said before, the Danes are getting rid of their wind turbines, and they're selling them to us, because they're now ending their wind turbine thing. The Article 10 process that came through Arkright and Casadega was done by the state at the behest of Cuomo, who gets his payments from the people he puts on those boards. He has received $3 million worth for his campaign chest, from the people that he has put on those boards. He names them as heads of the boards because they give him $125,000, and then they rubber-stamp the Article 10, which is what's coming your way. The Article 10 went two weeks, and the DEC was there, Department of Health, Department of Agriculture, all of those people represented us, not one bit. They asked no questions of our expert witnesses that we brought on hearing, on the health questions, on the property values, on the death of bats and birds, that's a serious, serious thing. Our agriculture in our, in our county will be affected economically by the loss of the birds and the bats, because we have a lot of agriculture. If you ask the board in Attica, what they did was they sent out a survey to their people. Attica is in your area. They sent out a survey to their entire town, a piece of paper that said, "Do you want windmills?" And the people wrote back and said, "No, we don't." And the board respected their wishes. That's all we ask of all of our boards, and I think all town boards should have that ethical position, to just ask the people of their town, every last one of them, whether they want windmills in their midst. Economics, that's it. Oh, you know, we have a gas-fired plant in our county, it's called NRG in Dunkirk, and it makes 435 megawatts, and it sits on 98 acres. Our wind turbine factory, which will impact 40,000 acres, will make 30 megawatts. So, figure it out. 30 megawatts impacting 40,000 acres versus the cleanest, safest, most reliable, most dispatchable, already set-up way of producing electricity through gas, which we have lots of, 435 megawatts on 98 acres, or 30 megawatts on 40,000 acres. Which one's greener?
Would we discuss and make a decision if the board is prepared to vote on this, or not?
We vote on a town law that stipulates the concerns that we've had.
The town law that's been put together by the planning board and...
Do you understand that? They're voting on a town law, equal 16? Which stipulates all the specifications that the board has put together, and they'll vote on it.
That's right, like you're voting on the windmill.
Correct. Perhaps, I'm not saying we're definitely voting, that will be up to the board to discuss and to determine if there's further steps, investigation, or if we're prepared to vote on it.
Why don't you survey your residents? Why don't you survey your residents? What's the margin of, the length of your point? Why don't you try to find out what people really think?
Well, I've talked to an awful lot of people.
Not everybody.
Not everybody. You need to ask everybody.
Ask every taxpayer.
Every taxpayer could be here, right?
I hope everybody understands that New York State is taking control of this. We have the town board...
On that call, or against? Because it's going to be a way... Look, some of the information here tonight, the people want to hold up, but some of the inferior information.
Call it out.
They say that their property is within sorts of distance from the windmill. The windmill is the closest windmill to their property is over 3,000 feet. No, no.
We didn't come here, I'm sorry, we didn't come here hard, and I, we all have our own beliefs.
Can I finish saying what I'm saying as a town board member, please? I, as a town board, I have the best interest of the town. Believe me, I do. But I'm one person, we have to work together. The New York State law is going to, I don't see how sending a survey to every member is going to stop New York State from putting windmills in our town, but my concern would be to make it the safest and the most profitable for our town, which will be, am I wrong, that there will be a pilot agreement?
That's what we have proposed, we have proposed a pilot and a host...
To the town?
To the town, yes.
You haven't done that yet.
We have not formally proposed that, no.
No. So, this is still all in the beginning phases. I just want you to know, we're not drinking the Kool-Aid, and if anybody knows me personally, I definitely ain't drinking no Kool-Aid, okay? I'm going to do what I feel is best. Will it be perfect? No, I'm not perfect, but please, just give us a chance to look this, you know, see this through. It's way far than a done deal, but I don't think that we have a whole lot of control where New York State's concerned. We can do what we can for our local, with our local law, and we will work with the planning board. That's all I got to say.
Folks, let me, I'd like to, the question was answered, asked earlier ago by Leslie, what's the next step? You actually have, it's sort of a bifurcated, two-way process. You have the whole thing in front of the Department of Public Services, and that's one set of the thing. And Leslie and Rick, I'll get your email, and I'll let you know when they are at the next meeting, so you can show off. I've known them for years, so, but that's one part. The other part is the town process, and this law that they had the hearing on, this wasn't just crafted overnight, it was crafted by Invenergy. The original law, I mean, the basis is local law, 3/2007, and that was over a year in planning, and Devere was on the planning board back then. Because I remember Barb George, I saw you, there's Barb, Anne Marie and Ron were on the board that time. It went through. And then, two years ago, Jim Whitaker came to me and said, "We need to revise the wind law." And I said, "Well, we can't go revise any law unless you put a moratorium in it." And I reminded him, and Ron and Devere should remember this, maybe Barb, when the cellphone towers were all the rage around 1995 to about 2000, and they were coming over everywhere, and everyone said everyone was going to die of radiation, and a lot of the arguments that are against windmills tonight were put, I remember, were put out against those towers years ago. But, we put a moratorium on to allow the planning board to do the work. The planning board did the work, I barely met with you, because Jim decided at some point that he wanted a law with John that put a lot more safety things in, John's view was different than Jim, they had different interests. John was very concerned about the safety, and Jim may think I'm talking out of school, but Jim was just more concerned about banning them outright, and how to find a law to legislate that way. Jim wasn't malicious either, Jim's a good guy. We drafted a law, I worked a lot with John on it, and there's a whole procedure, it didn't come together, and then the planning board, they met with me afterwards, and they said, "Look, we got to do this law." At that point, Randy was still on the planning board, had been elected, but I met with him, and we discussed, you know, what has to be done next, and an earlier draft of the law was actually just a series of amendments. Then it was decided to make sure, it sort of encompassed and dealt with all the laws in the town, so it was revised again. And, I'm not a person that looks forward to litigation, that just costs the taxpayers money. It's not a wise use of public funds. So, you try to craft a law that is the best interest, and it's Anne Marie, and Anne Marie was around when we were doing this the first time, and you try and make a law, it's not going to be perfect. I tried, I can't, you know what, as I always said to my clients when I used to litigate regularly, I'll do my best, but I can't guarantee success, and I don't guarantee I'll make you happy, but I will get a result. That's what's going to end up here, they're going to make an informed decision, but even so, as Randy said, next month, they, you know, they can have their hearing on the 15th again, or open it up. The board makes the decision, they don't have to vote on it next month, they could vote on it later. You know, it's, it's an open-ended process. And so, you're allowed to speak your mind and everything. This isn't the Soviet Union or modern-day China, it's Xinjiang. Sorry, just, I do have a problem with dictatorial government, so, anyways, folks, it's, I'm glad everyone got to speak tonight and freely, you know there won't be any personal retribution against anybody here, because this is America, and thank God we still have rights, and Rick can write whatever the hell he wants in the paper, and I've been reading Rick for over 12 years, and agreeing, disagreeing, but always entertained and respecting him. Sorry, Rick, I got a pick on you, man. But there you go, folks, that's the best I can say. Everybody, whether you agree or disagree, but during these times of trickle-down economics, it ends up being that from the state, down to the county, down to the town, it all just, they just keep passing the buck down the line. And as a resident here, after they pass it down to the town, the town then passes it on to us. But, if they want to put in windmills to be able to generate some income, any income at all, I mean, where would, where would the, where does the money come from? I guess that's my question. You know, if it doesn't come from the windmills, it's going to come from us.
Yeah, you're right.
That's just my thoughts on it.
You have to read your lease to know. I mean, they aren't all the same, they're not all the same. Hopefully, hopefully yours is a good one.
We have, we have a gravel pit, that, that's, all right, but that's, that's all right, that's a resource. All right, we have an oil lease, we have a gas lease.